Welcome to the Selectman's Meeting for March 11th, 2020. First item is, for the Town of Acton, Maine, first item is sleuth of lag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the public, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Cheryl, can I have that list I gave you?
Okay, Town Administrator Weekly Update. Paul Jones, Ken.
Thank you. All right, I think I'll let you know last week, but we tightened it up. We did make appointments for next Monday, starting at 11 o'clock. The transportation superintendent and myself will be interviewing one, two, three, four, five people. They've all been contacted and appointments have been scheduled, so we'll see what he thinks with the first round. And then we'll bring it back to the full board. I think David is our lead on it, right?
I think so.
Okay, so if we need something, we'll bring that back before you guys. He's hoping to...
Oh, we're still on transfer station? Can I give an update? I talked to Bob.
Yeah, so he wants them to start on April 1st. Thank you.
Sorry about that. I thought you were going on to something else.
Yeah, it's okay.
I did talk to Bob the other day about, remember we talked about the charging?
Yes.
And I talked to him the other day, and I guess we've come to, he's come to the decision now that he thinks it probably ended up being more costly than effective, so...
The charge for what gets dumped in the demo dumpsters?
Well, because I haven't, somebody has to keep track of the monies, you know, this and that, and they're already down a guy because they, when Gary got done, and right now they're running with the, you know, the small crew, and he seems to think that by the time you, at the end of the day, we wouldn't accomplish a whole lot financially from it because we'd have to hire on more help and this and that, so I'm just...
Maybe it's something we can revisit, you know, again sometime. Yeah, once he gets his staff back up and...
But I was talking, when he went through the other day, that's what I was talking to him about, and so I just figured I'd relay that message there and...
Yeah, I think it could be a moneymaker, but I'm gonna go with what Bob thinks.
And he's happy with being able to keep his budget as a flat line.
Yeah, he's got experience up there and knows what he's doing, so, yeah.
The way I looked at it was, I think we have a $3,600 increase this year on that line for the demo, and...
Because of a contractual increase, right? Because of one of the hauling?
No, not that, it's because more, the flux of demo coming in has increased. So I think before we make any drastic moves, maybe we oughta go through another fiscal year, see how it rolls. If it continues on that track, then look at it again.
All right, so as you know, we had the election on March 3rd. We had 767 voters participate in the primary, which was good for Acton. Out of those 767, over 250 either enrolled or changed their party on Election Day, so our staff was extremely busy, so kudos to them that helped work because that was, that was a lot. Right now, the last few days, we've been working on deadlines from the Secretary of State's office. Certain things can't be done until five days after the election, just in case there's a recount, and then once those five days pass, you've got really 24 hours to do A, B, and C. So Cheryl and I and Kayla have been working overtime to try to meet all those requirements, and it looks like we will, but it was a smooth election. I'm gonna be requesting more training for election clerks coming up. You're gonna see more of that going on, and I'm gonna be making some changes, but overall it was fairly smooth. If you don't know, Louise Horn is going to be turning 100 on Monday, March 16th. The family has contacted us, and we're gonna be putting out something on the sign out there, a big sign, and she's also asking for, she's not asking, the family is asking for cards to be sent to her, so she gets a little mail and a cheer on her face, so I'll give you guys the address, and we can do that, so it's exciting. She's our Boston Kane recipient, she's the holder of it, so she's going strong.
That's great.
We did finally wrap up the Planning Board emails. Remember, a few weeks back, we had sent an email, or maybe even, it's probably been close to a month if I really looked, reminding them that they needed to be using those. A few of the Planning Board members did come needing their passwords, and I needed some time to have our IT guy reset them and reset them back up. We assumed they had been using them all along. Nevertheless, so emails went out to their personal and their PB accounts telling them what their usernames and passwords were. I think I CC'd you guys on the group email. So that's taken care of. The two people that don't use emails, we're mailing hard copies out, so if they decide to start using them, they'll have access to what they do. And reminders went out to the downstairs staff, just like any other committee. If you've got somebody on a committee that doesn't use email, anytime you're emailing the committee, whoever's not using email should be receiving a hard copy in the mail of whatever you're sending the rest of them. You can't assume that that person doesn't need to see it, so that was done. So dog list, we've been trying to clean up. March 1st is when the summonses start getting issued because of the election on the 3rd. I did ask the Animal Control to put it off until the 1st of this week, so I can get them a cleaned up list. There's still probably 30 dogs on there, so he's received that now and is knocking on doors, so... The last time we talked about a Freedom of Information/Committee request, we weren't real sure what direction it was going into. This was the, this is when Mrs. Berlin came to us looking for anything tied to Article 43 since it started. I think when we last discussed it, I told you that we sent an email basically saying that if it was a committee, show us when, when the committee voted. So she did send back some minutes. The committee did make a motion looking for that information. I replied to the email, letting her know that when it comes from a committee, they don't have to treat it as a freedom of information, the board just wants to see a vote that the full committee wanted it. Yep. So I did ask her, I reached out to her to ask her when the next road committee meeting was, to make sure that we had the information for them by that point, so she doesn't have one scheduled, but said she would let me know, so we will have that on the back burner, make sure it's ready for the next road committee meeting, and so, but that's taking up an extensive amount of time, trying to pull it. I believe you'll find that they have pretty much everything in there, but we'll double check. One of the other things the board did that we've been working on is Mr. Donahue came before you at our last Selectman's Meeting, and we really got to the end of the conversation, and I kind of alluded to you that, you know, I feel like we've exhausted, or my office anyways, has exhausted everything I can for his requests. Spending hours and hours on research and trying to find these minutes and what this means, what that means, and what somebody interpreted 30, 40 years ago. And I asked you if you guys wanted to pursue it, or if we wanted to just kinda tell him that he needed to take it to the next step. You guys indicated that we wanted to have another lawyer look at it, so we know that it can't be broken clegg, there are some conflicts there. I'm looking for an outside attorney to do this. I've spoken to a couple. My original attorney request, there's actually a conflict, something else going on in town, so he couldn't, so I've got two other calls out to a couple of attorneys that seem, it appears they specialize in that, but I just want you to know, I mean, make sure you know it's gonna be costly and time consuming, and it's gonna take me some time to get that answer, but...
Can you, whoever you, whoever we find, obviously, if they could give us some sort of roundabout number?
Yeah, I would like to kinda know.
I mean...
In a ballpark.
Do we wanna be spending thousands on this?
I mean, some of these, I mean, remember, some of these original votes that he referenced, I mean, and it was kinda, I mean, there's a lot of area. What I understood, and if I'm wrong, somebody needs to correct me, but what I understood we were focusing primarily on was 13th Street and Cove Wood to start. I mean, he tied, he talked about Flat Ground, he talked about Tattle, he, there was a lot of, you know what I mean? But the question, as I understood, because the town has gotten two legal opinions, one from May Municipal and one from Bergen and Parkinson, saying that you could plow 13th Street for this reason. He's provided evidence that he believes that why that might not be accurate. They're gonna have to go back, it's gonna take some time and research.
I, last, not last week, week before, we had our last meeting, when we talked about going to an outside source, to another lawyer, originally, I was under the assumption that we were gonna be looking into Tattle Street, all of those.
Okay, seeing that's, okay.
Okay, so, I mean, I really don't wanna keep beating the same horse on 13th Street if we already got the legal opinion from it.
But we told them, and that was my question to you guys last week, but we flat out told them that you would.
I thought we were talking about Tattle Street.
Okay.
The whole, because he's, because I guess what I was confused is because he was tying in, using 13th Street Cove Wood as an example of why his road should be taken care of.
Right, but he's got, and he's got a long list of roads that he believes should be taken care of, but, you know, the biggest question with 13th Street is that when May Municipal and Leah Racham wrote those opinion letters back in, you know, the '06-ish area, did they know about the vote that happened? Apparently, there was a vote in '04, '05 that he pointed out where the voters turned down voting, plowing that piece of 13th Street. That was his big concern, when I met with him, and what I, you know...
Yeah, they voted down numerous roads and that one article.
Well, there was one article that actually came out and asked them to plow 13th Street.
Oh, that one, yeah.
And they, and they, but it failed, and then essentially, what he's saying is that, okay, well, it failed, but the year after, we got a legal opinion that said we could, so what was the purpose of the vote?
We got that opinion, it was after I was road commissioner, so it was like...
The problem is, is the opinion lists out everything that they said they reviewed to come to their determination.
Was that one not?
And that was not one of them.
Yeah, it was not part of that, so...
Or could we just have, if we find somebody, just have them look at...
I don't know that how you can open a can halfway, I mean, you know what I mean? I wouldn't, I mean, I don't, and maybe we'll find somebody that would be willing to take it on, but they're gonna, I mean, they're gonna have to go...
They're gonna go way back.
It's gonna take some time and effort and some money, and I'm not saying, you know, not to do it, I'm just updating you that I am, I'm trying to, I heard what you told me last week, I'm trying to find an attorney that has no conflict, but has strong enough land, land record skills, and has time, they're just looking for a new client, so, to be continued.
I just don't wanna waste...
I don't wanna spend thousands on this.
No, me neither.
Well, I don't know how you're gonna, you're gonna possibly...
Yeah, we hang our hat on the fact that, what was it, who was the one that said?
May Municipal and Leah Racham from Bergen and, I mean, I could, and so Leah, Leah no longer works for Bergen and Parkinson. I mean, I could reach out to Durwood, I mean, I, you know, we've had a, he was our attorney prior to Bergen clegg. I, you know, I could reach out to him to say, you know, would you take another look at just this area? You know, Leah's letter clearly states all these things except for this, you know, would this change your opinion? But then the other side may say, well, it's biased, you're reaching out to the same attorney that, who eventually their firm wrote the letter, you know what I mean? So I don't know what he's gonna say.
Yeah, but by doing that, and you tell them, okay, well, we have...
Giving them new evidence.
Right.
Would that change your opinion?
Right.
So getting a third party involved and having them come up with a separate opinion.
Yeah, I'm fine with doing that.
You wanna just try to reach out to him and see if this...
Yeah, and if it comes back that, no, that doesn't change the opinion any...
Then we can make a decision.
So then I'm not doing anything with Tattle Street or Flat Ground Road or private, so what about all the other private roads that he listed off, those other articles? Am I trying to find the answers? Am I having an attorney look into all that?
I don't think it's worth it personally.
But somebody needs to be able to tell him that.
This stuff has been, this stuff has been batting around since...
And we're already addressing the Flat Ground issue anyways, we're talking about...
Flat Ground, I think we've got under control.
Yeah.
The other ones...
So if, depending on what happens with 13th Street, will that answer the question on Tattle? He lost me on exactly what, no.
No, because what he's saying is, he's going all the way back to the 1800s, saying the road was never discontinued correctly, same idea as Flat Ground Roads, so he's going way back, so I don't think there's any way that, without having somebody actually look into that, that we're gonna be able to answer that, because, you know, if we start approving roads because we can't figure out they're, you know, not approved, disapproved correctly, whatever you wanna call it, then, you know...
Was that one, was Tattle Street one of the roads that...
Tattle Streets, well...
Was that one of the ones that came up around 2010, when we had that whole list of roads?
That was old, no.
'09, there wasn't that?
Oh, you're talking about the list, like, when they had H Road and all those roads?
You know, crap load of roads.
Well, right, and that's the other thing, he's, that was the other point that he's making, is that that article to maintain those certain parts of those roads was voted down, so why are we maintaining them now?
He doesn't think that we should be maintaining H Road, Sandborne Road, Hopper Road, Acton Ridge Road...
Those are all town roads.
Because...
But because there was a Warren article that I had in his defense, you know what I mean? There was a Warren article that said, shall, you know, do the voters of the Town of Acton want to maintain, and the roads are listed out? The question is, was it ever a legal article in the first place, but we were all in different positions.
Because what they did, what they did at town meeting, and I remember this meeting well, was there was a couple of roads put on the article that were, what was, the people thought, well, that are private, that thought that were town roads, so they put them onto that list. People at town meeting caught that, so instead of amending the article like they should have and taking those off and just...
Threw the whole thing out.
They threw the whole thing out.
All right, so he believes those roads, you know, if it was voted down, which the article was voted down, that they shouldn't be, so how do I answer that?
Because by law, if you take care of a road 30 years, you have to maintain it, keep maintaining it.
I'm just telling you, it's, when I tell you that my office has exhausted, it's, it's...
Yeah, yeah.
Am I using the right word?
It's a rough one.
So let me start with, all right, so that's what we'll do, we'll start with Durwood. I'll reach out to him and say, we think this piece might have been, we can't be sure if she received this as part of it because it's not listed in her letter.
Right.
Would you take a look at it? And then I'll come back to you. By then, chances are this will film. He'll update us on what exactly, if there's something, we'll go from there. Fair?
Yep.
Sounds good.
I should notice that nomination papers for the June 9th, 2020 town election are available beginning on Wednesday, March 4th, for the following positions. We have one Selectment Assessor and Overseer of the Poor for a three-year term, which is Kim's term, and then two members of the School Committee for a three-year term, which is Judy Shane and Jeanette Versus. Nomination papers must be obtained from the Town Clerk's Office during regular business hours and must be returned no later than 4:00 p.m. on Wednesday, April 15th. I gotta do that, too. Cheryl wrote me a note. Okay. I got a few site review notices that have been sent in my way, in no particular order. Acton Planning Board is scheduling a site walk on Monday, March 16th at 4:00, for the purpose of reviewing a conditional use application for the 18-acre solar array submitted by Saltage LLC located at 604 H Road, map 224, lot 26.
Yule Orchard.
Huh?
Yule Orchard.
I have no idea. H Road, sounds like it.
Yeah.
Uh, the Acton Planning Board is scheduling a site walk on Saturday, March 14th at 11:00, for the purpose of reviewing a site plan for the review application submitted by Grammy Rose at 233 Lot 4. That's Route 109, a lot of traffic down there, huh?
Hmm. What was that one again, for what?
Is that the dog?
It was a dog one, Grammy Rose, yeah.
Oh, that's for the dog, yeah, okay.
Because we've had, we've had a few people come in and they're interested, they wanna, they're concerned on how they're gonna get in and out of there at the speed, or...
Yeah.
Uh, this is the extra meetings, the Acton Planning Board, will have an extra meeting on Thursday, February 27th at 7:00, to discuss the proposed amendments to the Town of Acton zoning ordinance, which is the timber harvesting docks and other shoreland, good neighbor design, construction and storage, short-term rental. Okay, so that's the meeting after, so tomorrow is the actual public hearing. So a public hearing tomorrow, and this will be upstairs, I've confirmed with Ken, to discuss proposed amendments to the Town of Acton zoning ordinance for all the things that we just mentioned. This says the Town Thomas Cashin Meeting Room, but that's not correct, Ken told me that it would be upstairs. We have made arrangements for the Girl Scouts to use a hall at the fire station. There is a conservation meeting next Tuesday, Conservation Forest next Tuesday at 7:00. It's a Warren Finance meeting next Wednesday at 6:00 at the school. As I understand it, they're finishing up the budget and they'll be making their recommendations, so we should have...
What time is it again?
That one's at 6:00 at the school. Talked to Kim yesterday. The school committee, is the school committee voting this week?
Yes, tomorrow night.
School Committee's voting this week, then the idea is that we'll get those recommendations typed in as quickly as we can, we'll send it over. Warren on Finance will have a couple of days, and they'll make the recommendations hopefully next Wednesday, and you guys will get it in your hands. Cemetery is meeting on the 31st at 6:00. And then, did I give you these schedules last week?
Nope, we weren't here last week.
Well, two weeks ago.
I think a few weeks ago.
I did give them to you, okay, this is the schedule for the Saturday, the 28th, for the budget meeting, okay. I couldn't remember if I gave them to you, so that's all I have for that piece of it.
That's it?
That's it for, yeah.
Okay. Warrants and bills, I think we've signed those already, right?
Yep.
Okay, approval of the agenda.
Do we have those passed out, Cheryl? Did we pass them out?
I passed them out.
So, I'm sorry, before you do that, so some, so that's kind of the gray area for me with the new agenda format, because I was making just three, letting you approve it, getting up and leaving, but now you're not signing them really in here, because you're coming, you know, sneaking a little earlier, you haven't been...
That or different days we've been in.
So, right, or different days, right, so should I just plan on passing them out as soon as they come in now, so we're not leaving in the middle?
I don't think we're changing the agenda any.
Just leave it on there, because if we don't do it, we can do it, you know?
My question is, when, do I have three ready out here thinking that you...
Oh, the approval of the agenda?
Right, that's what I'm saying.
We haven't, I think we've changed the agenda once since we've been doing this.
Yeah.
I think once it's done, just pass them out, that's okay with you two?
That's fine with me.
Okay. Yep, okay, so we're at approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second that.
Move to second to approve the agenda, any discussion? Over vote, all in favor, all opposed? Minutes of the last meeting, and I think we have a couple of those, right?
Yes, we do. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of February 19th and February 26th, the Selectman's Meetings.
I'll second that.
Move to second to approve February 19th and February 26th, any further discussion? Call for vote, all in favor, all opposed? Okay, Department Heads, Committee Chair Updates, do we have any?
Dennis Long, Chair of the Warren Finance, I just want to touch bases with you, Jen. The School Committee is going to vote on their budget tomorrow night, and then, like you said, Kim will send it up to you, and back and forth. What would be the timeframe when we get the hard copy for the meeting? Would that be like Monday or Tuesday, or...
I mean, my goal is to have it released by Friday.
Yeah.
So if they, if they meet on Thursday, the 12th...
Right.
She'll send it over to me Friday morning. It's their budget, so we pretty much know what the recommendations are gonna be, so a lot of it's copying and pasting, it shouldn't take long.
Yeah.
So my goal will make it to be to, my goal will be to get it released on the 13th.
Okay.
That's Friday, because, I mean, we've heard...
You want me to touch bases with you this Friday afternoon?
Yeah, I mean, I'll just email, I'll email it out.
Yeah.
Or, you know, or yeah, you can touch base with me and we can, you know...
I mean, the School Committee's been very good, every time they have a budget workshop, they send that out to all the Warren Finance Committee with all the explanations and stuff. So as far as like the timeframe to be able to review the budget...
Right.
It's been right there all through the process.
Right.
I was just wondering about having the hard copy for our meeting down there Wednesday, that would...
No, I mean, I expect to, I expect to have their recommendations typed in on Friday.
Yeah.
And, um...
I mean, I won't put any more pressure on you, I mean, you've got enough to do.
I mean, I understand the timeline, and there are some things that take precedence, and the warrants are one of them, so we'll have the recommendations typed on Friday. I usually, once I type them all in, I send them back to Kim for her to proof them, and then I'll make it a PDF draft and send it to the full committee, so I expect you to have it by the end of the day Friday.
Okay.
If, and the only thing that would stop that is them not getting all the vote done Thursday night.
Right, right.
Other than that, it will happen before I leave this building.
Okay, okay, so I'll touch bases with you Friday afternoon. The other thing is that the Warren Finance Committee got their policies, procedures, stuff all written up and approved, and I think, I don't know if anybody's had a chance to look at them, but I think the committee did a great job with that.
How would the, did the board get them?
I haven't seen them.
They were sent in the minutes. They should have been sent to you anyway.
I mean, was there minutes, there were policies attached?
Yeah, that's what, that's what we did at the meeting, that's the only thing we did was the policy.
What time are they meeting tomorrow at the school?
6:00.
Okay, okay.
I don't think that we got minutes from your last meeting yet.
No, I'm sorry, 5:00.
5:00 would be better.
I'm sorry, I've, a few too many meetings.
Yeah, okay.
What day was your last Warren Finance meeting?
I think it was two weeks ago?
Yeah.
Maybe three weeks ago, Jen, I'm not sure.
I didn't see, and that was the one that wasn't filmed?
That was the one that wasn't filmed, it was a little mix up.
I haven't gotten any minutes from that meeting.
Okay. I know the intention was, she sent it out to the town's email, and I thought she did the copy.
Get them electronically?
Yeah.
You got, yeah.
Everybody did, yeah.
Were we CC'd on them, did anybody notice?
I don't know. I'll, I'll check, and I'll definitely get that to you anyway.
If one of you wanna hang out for a couple seconds after the meeting, you can log into your Warren Finance email account from here, and we can just pull them up.
Well, probably you're better off to have somebody other than me.
Well, you can stand over my shoulder and I'll log into yours.
Yeah, it's fine with me, Jen.
If it's there, that way we'd be able to have them, and yeah, the board can start looking at them. I haven't seen it yet, but I'm sure it's there.
Okay.
I didn't get an email.
If you didn't, then, but normally, when we do the minutes, it gets sent.
Yeah, yeah.
Sent to you, so I just assumed that...
Noticed that.
Where it was sent out, that it was, but I can check also.
Yeah, we can take a quick peek afterwards, if either one of you know your passwords.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Any other Department Heads, Committee Chairs? Okay, move on. Old business, Article 43.
All right, so on 3/6, which is since our last meeting, I got an email, I got a response from Wendy. And, so, hi Jennifer, thanks for your email, seeking DEP input, here are my thoughts. So in bold is my question, I'm not sure if I should put the whole question, but nevertheless, I ask to sign off that roads applying are within the watershed of a great pond and given documentation to prove it. If the town provides a list of road names, DEP can let the town know whether these roads are in the watershed of a great pond. Alternatively, DEP could provide a map of the town and could use a determination, so that sounds like easy enough, they'll do that.
Sounds easy.
I said also, we would be looking for a report from DEP or an environmental engineer that the great pond is listed on DEP's site, impaired water quality, and basically copying and pasting your question. To be clear, Section 3106 requires that the great pond is listed on the DEP list of bodies, and it is most at risk, has been listed as an impaired water quality monitoring assessment, and is identified threats. DEP could confirm which great ponds in Acton meet at least one of these criterias above. Alternatively, we can provide a list to the town of eligible great ponds, so, she's saying that they'll do that. Attach a statement from DEP or an environmental engineer stating that the private road is contributing to the degradation of the water quality. So, when the legislation was proposed, DEP developed an evaluating gravel road score sheet. I just don't want to read it word for word. "DEP may be able to provide the statement if it's evident from a recent watershed survey or if it's a road that we happen to know well. Depending on the number of roads and timing of their request, it may be feasible for DEP to visit proposed road projects to evaluate them. However, I would encourage the town or applicants to also work with York County Soil, Water, and just Soil and Water to do the necessary road evaluations. This work also begins at the district level." And she CC'd Jen Harris, the York County Project Manager, in that. And that was one of the agencies that we talked about adding on there.
Yep.
So, seems to be a go. Attached documentation from DEP identifying special work needed to remediate the problem. This request would likely go beyond what DEP could provide for the town. Depending on the number of applicants received, DEP might be able to review the work proposed in the applications that the town receives and comment on whether it would be helpful to remediate the problem. As mentioned above, York County would be an excellent resource to help develop road recommendations. So, I hope my responses help the town with the new application. Please call me directly." So, in summary, and like I said, this is the first time I really took the time to read it. It sounds like they're willing to do a majority of them. And the last one, she's just kind of pointing us to York County Soil, Water Conservation District. If I recall, the board's focus on this was to make sure that these outside agencies, for no charge, would be willing to help these towns.
Right.
We didn't want to move forward an application that was gonna cost them money with this environmental engineer. That was put in there as an extra. But this, I mean, she's telling us in writing that she's willing, they're willing to do it.
Okay.
So, it's not gonna cost them money. And that was, I think, one of the concerns that we heard from a lot of people.
It's never ever cost me anything.
That's great.
We've always worked with them, so.
But, the board asked me to get something in writing from them, so.
Perfect.
I still have a couple of minor changes to make to the application as far as the extra agencies, so I'm hoping-
She's gonna add the York County Soil and Water to it?
Yep. I'm gonna list out some examples on each of the questions. All goes well, you may see a final draft next week.
Sounds great. Okay, anything else on Article 43?
No.
Okay, capital improvement in committee.
So, I advertised it again for the last couple of weeks. I have, um, one, two, three, and a half.
Three and a half, all right.
I have four. I have four. One needs carpooling.
That'll get us started, right?
I have four. Um-
And we wanted to have an odd number.
We need one more person.
We need one, we need one more, or we have to eliminate one, one or the other?
No, no, you can't eliminate one.
Okay, so we need one more. Shouldn't be too difficult to find one more.
I'm looking at all you people out there.
There's gotta be one more. Which way is that finger going? I can't quite tell.
You wanna be on it?
Thank you.
Nice.
Thank you. Thank you for pointing out the obvious. Yeah.
I have a couple of, well, and actually, let me think about that. I mean, you figure, you gotta either watch the meeting, be on Facebook, and there's only certain places. I have a couple of, and I just thought of it.
Couple of maybes?
Well, I have a couple of people that have said to me, because they're, um, they qualify under our exemption for the excise, and they are very grateful for the town, and they're always asking if they can, so maybe I can get one of them to serve on the committee to-
Sure.
To see, let me reach out to a couple of people. Remind Michelle. We'll reach out to a couple of our guys and see if we can-
I had someone the other day to ask, say that he's one of the guys on the committees there. He's never picked, so I can also, also speak to him.
Oh, tell him he'll be picked this time.
Almost guaranteed.
So, it's a guarantee.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else on that?
Yes, sir.
New business, liquor applications. I was just thinking, the other day is about time.
Yep, um, so Greg Martinez, Iron Tails, is being proactive. And, um, you know, his license expires May 1st. The state really does like it 30 days before.
Yeah.
Um, so I was hoping to schedule, let me find my calendar. Hoping to schedule a public hearing. I mean, if I scheduled it tomorrow, it'd be two weeks out, 14 days, it'd run into Smart Shoppers. So, the 25th. Uh, he's got his application, it's complete, he's got his-
When did you get the application? Did it come through the mail, or did he drop it off?
Came in the mail.
All right, you might want to check and see if he's home.
Um, I've communicated with him.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, he actually, he actually asked me for that, specifically for that date.
Okay.
And I called him today to tell him I put him in the agenda.
Perfect.
Yep, maybe we'll check with the chef's department.
Yes, I'll go down through my list.
Regular stuff.
Yep.
Good.
Okay, 25th.
Okay. Town Clerk.
Oh, so this might be a tough, touchy, touchy subject.
Town Administrator Training.
So, I mean, we look at the big picture. And I'm not being woe is me or anything, but, you know, I'm one of the ones that gets the least amount to attend training classes because I'm not able to leave the building. And it's, I mean, there are certain certifications, certain things that, you know what I mean, that I should be able to get and complete, but I can't leave the building. And most of these were booked prior to my previous assistant leaving. I'm not sure it's real fair that I still can't take them.
I think we may have some days we might have to close.
But there's a lot.
Yeah.
What do you have?
So, I have one on the 7th in April, a taxes one. The 14th, a lean one. And the 22nd, a municipal budgeting. Those three in April. And that's between nomination papers and taxes. Um, I've made sure they're not on the due dates, so people are just gonna have to plan ahead. Taxes are due on the 15th. I'm not thrilled about closing the office on the 14th, but they, May Municipal only schedules these. I mean, they send us the dates.
Right.
You know what I mean? I mean, and I miss them each year for a different reason. And it's, and, and most of them, I mean, I get the packets in the mail and I read it, and there's really nothing. I mean, I know I'm keeping up with state statutes, and I'm doing everything, but if I'm not physically at the class, it doesn't count towards one of my check marks.
Yeah.
It needs to be done.
Well, we've always promoted classes and everything else.
I know, but I just feel bad.
Is there any way, yeah, you don't have, you don't have anybody to fill in right now, do you?
I have nobody. I can't, um-
As far as registrations go, so.
No, and she can't, she cannot be left alone in the building. We're talking about two weeks, poor girl.
Right.
Um, these, most of these are on Tuesdays.
Yep, Tuesday, Tuesday, and a Wednesday, I think it was.
Michelle, um, oh, I thought I looked at. So, Tuesday is the 7th, the 14th, yep, uh, the 22nd, as it is, I'll be boot scootin' to get back for our meeting. Those, so two Tuesdays and a Wednesday. So, the Tuesdays, I, I mean, Michelle, you know, again, she's not keeping up with all of the rec- you know what I mean? We're trying to cross train, we've gotta keep up with each other's trainings. I mean, she could certainly do the basics, but she's not gonna leave Shapley to come over here. She's elected over there, so that's her prime, you know. Possibly the 22nd, um, I could try to, you know, get her to, oh, no. No, the 22nd is the basic municipal budgeting. She'll be joining me at that one.
She'll be there at that one, too.
Well-
I mean, Sarah's employed somewhere else.
I think, I-
Sarah's employed somewhere else.
I think we have to close. I mean, you need the training, you've gotta have it.
And then, there's a vital records one on May 13th.
Well, they have to be done, so.
I mean, the good news is, I didn't pick the ones, I mean, I'm picking only ones in Portland, so that they're not over, they're not back-to-back classes, because they are offered sooner and more spread out, but then they're closing the offices for two days in a row. And then, the only other one, I think, that I found that I was interested in was not until November. Oh, no, I'm sorry, September, 22nd and 23rd. You all set back there? I can't, when you talk, it echoes into the microphone?
Sorry.
That's okay. The 22nd and 23rd, now, this is, um, these are required by state law for the registration of voters, so these are not optional. This is the voter registration and Title 21A state election laws. And with the presidential, I mean, all hands on deck. So, that one, I'll be dragging Ms. Kayla to with me.
Yep. That was what date?
That was September 22nd and 23rd. And then, November 5th, there's a managing freedom of information request.
Got a lot of those, probably, I'd take that, huh?
Well, and that's the thing. I mean, none of these are, you know, there's a lot of other ones I'd like to take, but I like, like the verbal judo. But some of them, in those spring conferences, I mean, where they just get together and, you know, network. I mean, I'm not picking any of those, I'm only picking the required ones. So, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but it's training. Huh?
So, we wouldn't want to open up, like, instead of opening up at four, four to eight on Thursday, do a Thursday.
Well, I mean, I think we're giving them a month's notice. We're open two Saturdays in the month.
Yeah, and I don't want to put any more hours on you.
No, I'd say we just, we close.
Thank you.
We close what we have to close.
I mean-
Like you say, we're giving them a month's notice, and, I mean-
And I don't know where else to advertise, other than the Smart Shopper and the website and the cable. And there's always gonna be people that aren't gonna see it, um, and I'm sorry, but I'm not sure what else to do.
Yep, sign. Sign up front, too.
Yep.
After we bring Mrs. Horn's thing down, we can put that up.
There we go.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
That's all we can do.
All right. Next is the Order of Municipal Officers.
That would be Item C, Order of Municipal Officer.
Sorry.
Go right ahead.
This is the document that you sign each year pursuant to Title 36. It instructs the tax collector to apply all tax payments to the oldest year first.
Oh, yes, okay.
It's a required-by-law form.
Yep. Yep, I think we have that posted everywhere, too, as well, so. Okay, what's your wishes on this? Order of Municipal Officers.
I make a motion, we sign the Order of Municipal Officers.
You go.
Pursuant to 36 MRSA 906.
I'll second that.
Moved to second to sign the Order for Municipal Officers. It is a mouthful.
I'm reading this sideways, so.
Okay, any discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed? Okay, Transfer Station Expenditures.
So, um, the transfer station has some lighting that he's looking to have replaced. Material and labors is $1,290. The estimated rebate is $280, so when all is said and done, it's $1,010. His building maintenance line is overdrawn already, so we're coming to you for permission to take it out of a compact or maintenance account, which we have the authority, we're not changing the bottom line, to allow him to expend it out of that. That's an emergency line in case something goes wrong with his equipment. Where in March, he really wants to get the lighting done.
Okay.
So.
It's fine with me. Here with you?
Yep, good. I'm fine with it, yep.
Bridge Report.
All right, so they just, just, just came in the mail. Uh, so, a copy of the interim inspection report of municipal, uh, municipal-owned bridge and New Hampshire DOT's recommendation of the posting. So, this is for Canal Road over Great East Lake Outlet. They are looking for a weight limit of three tons. What's that now?
I think it's at three now. It's at three now.
Perfect, so it doesn't have to change. And then, the actual bridge report, each breakdown, it's detailed, it just came in today's mail. So, Cheryl and I will make it one-sided and email it over to you and the Road Committee as well, and the Road Commissioners.
Yep.
Anybody want to see it immediately, or happy to be at email?
Find email. Okay. This is our CC report.
Yeah, what is that, Ed?
I hear you.
Oh, here we go. Out of order. Uh, let's see, so, "Hi Jennifer, great news. Back to the original reason for contacting you. Saco River Quarter Commission. We were really hoping to seek out some representation for Acton on the board. We were wondering if maybe you could put out, put it out there, put it on your website, that Acton has two empty seats. We also have a new mapping system for public use, and would like the opportunity to come and speak to the town." Uh, not right now. Would there be any interest from the Selectmen or possible code enforcement? Um, we, you know, do you remember when sometimes I come to you and ask you to give permission, we ask for permission to sell these, or to give them our layers, our mapping layers, the layer of the zoning? So, they're getting that from us. So, I mean, we appreciate their, we can, you know, we can use it. I'll double-check with Ken, but really, most importantly, she's, the town of Acton has two open seats for the Saco River Quarter Commission. So, we'll advertise it and see if anybody's interested in serving on it. Maybe find some roads that tie into it where, hmm. So, Saco River Quarter travels through Acton.
Is that more on the other side of town, off of H Road, off of, is that Youngs Ridge or Acton Ridge? Acton Ridge?
Yeah, Bolch.
Yeah, Bolch.
So, maybe I can ask her some specific roads that travel through, and maybe we can reach out to some of those people?
It's a good idea.
Does anybody know?
Maybe District 1 can give you a hand on that, uh, maybe.
That's you.
You know anything on that, but, so, okay.
All right, so I'll see if we can find somebody to sit on that committee.
Okay. Resignation.
Could read that one. I just, I wasn't, I wanted to read what was in it. Maybe stop after the first line or so?
Go right ahead.
"Good morning. It is after much thought and with deepest regrets that I write this letter to inform you of my resignation from the Acton Recreational Department. I have truly enjoyed my time serving on the REC, but unfortunately, the demands of my position have evolved into such that I can no longer devote the time that is required. This committee is compromised, is comprised of some of Acton's most dedicated citizens, and I trust that they will continue to provide and grow the program they offer. Although I am resigning, I would still be willing to assist where I can, but in a less demanding fashion. Please do not hesitate to call me, and I will do my best to be of assistance to our wonderful children of Acton whenever feasible. My last day serving will be Saturday, March 14th. Before that time, I would like to hold a meeting to help the committee get prepared and have a plan in place moving forward to ensure as much success as possible for the future. Thank you so much for allowing me the opportunity to serve our great community, especially the amazing children of our little town. Sincerely, Lisa Long."
Two wishes on her resignation.
We accept her resignation. Don't want to, but-
Will accept with regret?
Yes, much regret.
Do I hear her second?
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor? All opposed? Accept it with regret? It's too bad.
Yeah.
Yep.
Uh, the Vice Chair did contact me, um, told him that after you accepted it, we would start advertising it, and he will, they weren't able to find, Lisa sent another email since then. They weren't able to find a meeting date that worked.
Yeah, I saw that.
They're down two members right now?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have an executive session tonight?
We do.
We do, okay.
From Sunday.
As I was gonna say, we're gonna do announcements right now, so as you heard, there's two openings on the-
Comment?
Pardon?
Comment?
Yeah, we can do that, too.
Yeah, we can do that, I'll come back to that.
Sorry.
It's okay.
We're right on it tonight.
I bet.
It's okay.
I don't bet.
It's okay. So, on announcements, anyway, we have two openings on the REC Committee. Uh, Town Clerk's Office, Town Clerk's Office is gonna be closed on the 14th, which was-
This Saturday.
This Saturday? Is this Saturday? Okay. Mary Grant has two openings. School budget vote is on-
Monday, the 6th?
Yes, April 6th.
At the school?
So, now, we'll do public comment. Hey, with the public, anybody at all? Going once? Going twice? Okay. Uh, executive session. Go hear a motion.
I make a motion, go on an executive session title 1, 1, 405, 6A.
I'll second that.
Moved to second to go into the executive session. Uh, all in favor?[1464.54] Move to second it, go on to the executive session. Um, all in favor, all opposed? Okay. Since we've done everything else on here, so when we come back out, we probably will just be doing adjournment. So, okay.
Comment. You're gonna be here while we come out? Cheryl, you want to just bring my computer and stuff in? I'll set it. You're gonna be here while we come out? Cheryl, you want to just bring my computer and stuff in?
I'll set it.
I'll set it.
You know, I'm just...
I know.
I know.
Interesting.
No.
I have phones in my head, but they're for my earrings, so.
But I had fun, you should. You had fun.
Yes.
Yes.
Was that maybe?
I was, I was right there.
I was, I was sent out to the email.
As far as I know, you are, you know, that, that should be the case, because Cheryl's pretty, uh, pretty competent and, you know, pretty on top of things, as far as, you know, and stuff like that. I don't know, I, you know...
You want to sign?
Yeah.
All it does is put, put her on, doesn't mean anything else.
I've got a hard copy of both things. What happened, been put out?
Papers.
James?
Mm-hmm.
I think everybody should ask. I think everybody should have a say.
I, I, I'd love to do that.
It would be fun.
Oh, yeah, it would.
It would be good. It would be good, yeah. Yeah, six or ten.
Oh, my God.
Oh, Lord, talk about split move.
That would be quite interesting.
No, I'm a bit whatever, because, you know, I mean, you've been told, uh, a year now, but it wasn't, uh, absolutely not. So I had time for this one.
Yeah, I don't know.
Whatever, whatever, I said, it's what it is.
Yeah, pretty much.
I'm gonna go on mute, I have sausage gravy.
So I guess do the email thing.
Hmm?
So I guess do the email thing.
For?
If she wants to down after the meeting.
Oh, you want me to do that?
Well, I don't care.
I don't care.
I don't know, I got my email thing here.
She does.
Well, I can, oh, yeah, I don't want to.
I got sausage gravy.
Yeah.
I'm gonna call, I can tell you, man, you're a mouse.
There, there will be plenty.
Yeah.
That's something that'll go real well at my house.
That's okay.
Oh, yes. What do you mean, well, it's only you and your wife and your father now, huh? And my son. Well, that too. Well, there's four people eating. You want to start paying my food bill? No?
I can't, I can't.
I guess I go to the freezer, get plenty of that.
I, I can't get enough.
I mean, when my daughter, when their five kids are home, 300 bucks, nothing. Oh, I can't go, I cannot go to the...
And they can't go once a week.
I can't go to the grocery store without spending a hundred bucks.
Right, right.
Okay. And that's, you know, just, I need, gotta, I gotta go get milk, bread, uh, bananas, doughnuts.
Buck swims Monday, Wednesday and Friday, so I am so glad he'd go swimming on those three days, because I hate shopping, even grocery shopping. I just, you know, it's like, give me an idea of where you're sitting so I can stop shooting people who are in my way.
Jesus.
Oh, I hate shopping, for such a passion. It's, it's like, oh, honey, I wrote a list. Could you, like you said, milk, bread, half and half?
Yeah, it's, I, I, you know...
Hey, Robin, will you sign this?
I probably go to the...
And, and he tells me I spend a hundred bucks.
I probably go to the grocery store at least twice a week, at least.
And, I mean, we probably spend, I don't know, 180 dollars, except in the summer.
You know, when you, when you, when you're looking at, you got on a milk cost and four dollars and change, you know?
I, I've been seeing that, um, food center, Level Lake or whatever it's called, up in, up the road.
Oh, Wakefield.
Wakefield. Really good prices, or you, you know, you buy a package and everything system, that's really good. So, it was a nice afternoon yesterday, so we took a ride up there. And so I had my shopping bags with me, pub shopping bags, but, oh, my God, it was like...
You know what?
What I would pay...
You know, I called you, I said, I have to take care of one of those, those are my house issues.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 but, I mean, I love this pub cheese. It's so good. You get the thing, a big container, this small, this tall, so fit around. 399.
Just enough for you to sit there with some crackers?
Yeah.
And, you know, whoop, it's gone.
Well, with the two of us, we can do that, you know, and sometimes it's a lunch for the two of us, really. It was 699 up there. And, and it'll just some avocados, if anyone feel that weird things. Avocados were 250 a piece. I know they're up this way.
We started, yeah.
About 250?
Oh.
Come on.
I'm healthy, yeah?
Yeah, I think so.
I won't be surprised.
But, uh, if you want, whatever you want.
I'm getting my mortgage ready.
The first year, Ellen, I was married.
Don't talk about that.
Her birthday's next, well.
I'm gonna go photo, man.
There you go.
Or tie.
Snowstone. And our anniversary's on the 23rd, and so our first anniversary, we had another big snowstorm. So, I, I can only hope. But I remember one year, April 1st, Mary Dennis husband planted his garden April 1st, and never lost a thing. So, you never know, there's always going to be problems.
Forget Mother Nature right now. It's this virus thing that are making people crazy.
Oh, yeah, that's why.
Is, is that still just driving, my God?
Absolutely stupid.
That's terrible. I thought, I found, what the hell is this? I found the best one, and I've worked so hard on this all day today. I mean, I really want you to, uh, I don't think I'd do a lot, but I'm all set for the virus now.
Jesus.
Since you...
Yeah.
No.
Can you find that anymore?
Hmm?
Can you find that stuff anymore?
What?
Where people buying it up?
I know, this isn't a virus that you should die with, or something. I, I, I mean, hell, you went out, I mean, years ago, we used to say, we're terrible newspaper. We don't have newspapers now, but I'm pretty sure you could find something from that.
What was the biggest reason these people used to the Sears?
Sears catalog.
That's why they always had it open, they ought to.
That's right, that's right. Uh, it's on main schools today, colleges, you may, um, they play the games, no spectators, and they're doing what a lot of the parties are doing. You go home for spring break, don't come back. Study from, you know, study.
I got the school, on Monday, we got, my brothers are going, they have this afternoon. It's about their grandparents.
Yeah.
Keeps you closed.
Well, there's, uh, well, Marshwood, that's the name of it.
Daniel, with a brick in front of it.
Berwick County, yeah, they have.
Yeah.
They have a bunch of kids.
Yeah, I'm gonna go school myself.
Go on a school.
Well, and I'll take care of that guy.
Whatever.
No, I'll take care of him, he can head home.
I'm going.
They went to, um, Italy, and I think they came back by February 24th. So, and that was about the same time this whole thing was coming up. So they had these kids come back, and I said, no, um, you know, voluntary isolation. They weren't letting them back into the school.
Well, my mom...
Seems to work.
My mom has a friend, and her kids go to Nova, her daughter's, which is going on a France on a school trip.
Yeah.
But I guess, they don't want to cancel, they believe they're gonna have to.
They have to. Um, my, my daughter's a teacher in the end-over-mass school system. They were supposed to be leaving April 1st for Spain. 25 kids. They've all paid their money, four, four grand a piece.
Oh.
Yeah, these trips.
You're on a trip?
Yeah. Well, we think France would cost them. Yeah, because you have airfare, hotels, and food.
I guess...
And spending money.
Well, I guess, like, this class, does it, like, you take a certain, like, history class, and they go with, like, friends over here?
Yeah.
And I guess, I guess she's been working for, for three years now, so, I guess, I guess if they cancel a month before, they get their money back or something.
They, they're now saying that they're not giving anybody their money back, because these companies that do these trips, if they gave all these kids their money back, they go bankrupt. But to me, it boils down to a really simple equation. You want four grand or you want your kid? No, really?
A month, four grand.
Well, that, some kids you would want four grand, you know, but I mean, you know, it gets, but we will have to.
So she had half a dozen kids, some younger than her, well, yeah.
Yeah.
There you go.
Last year, she took them to China.
Oh, really?
Yeah. And, uh, but, um, India closed its borders today. If you're not an Indian, you can't go into India. Germany's closing their borders.
They, you know what, they blame it all on Trump, which is, blame it all on him. It's all his fault.
It's not Trump's fault, and it's not the Democrats' fault.
Well, that's...
It's the Chinese virus type there.
Yeah, but I'm saying CIA is the one that started it. Trump and CIA started it.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Well, you know, I'm talking about my nephew a lot, who's an epidemiologist at Johns Hopkins.
A what?
Epidemiologist, infectious disease specialist.
Oh, Dr. Williams.
He's gone. He wouldn't stay here.
No, I understand.
Oh, I know he is, but so is my nephew.
Dr. Williams, that's what he is, he...
Right, that's why he left. Keena's wife got him back three days ago. They're back up to P E R. But no, nephew, I mean, it's a lot of things. And we find out where they came, come from. And he says, this one's no different. It's animal.
Well, did you see that meat market that they traced it back to in China?
Oh, yeah.
The giant meat market, like, there's meat outside of like a month.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. But so many things, you know. I mean, I know there are things we can get from plain old house cats. Cats dirty, you don't take care of it, or whatever.
Right now, last week, I was around that Conex, or that reconstruction convention they had over the years, for wall construction. They, they didn't send any of the people there. They spent over $2 million sitting there with that, moving equipment and stuff like that, they sent down the people. Because one, they had one representative go to Italy, they went to China, right before this all started.
That's it.
And that, they shut the whole company down. That guy's in quarantine, they don't say anybody, anybody. This guy came back, went to this, went to that office, they shut the whole thing down.
Austin canceled their St. Patrick's Day, right?
Oh, yeah.
Which I think is like...
Well, they don't have, uh, I just saw something posted on Facebook, where Jeopardy and Wheel of Fortune?
Yeah.
No, no, no.
No, well, the, hey, March Madness, no audiences. They're letting parents go in of the players. But can you imagine March Madness?
Where they gonna go with the Olympics? Isn't it Olympics this year?
Well, they, yeah, but they're gonna have to start thinking about it.
Yeah, but when is it? Is it coming right now? It's Tokyo, isn't it?
It's in Tokyo, and, but is it, um, it would be the Winter Olympics, anybody would know.
Oh, I don't know.
Or is it the Summer?
I don't know.
Because it always seems like it's opposite of the season we're in. I don't know, but I don't think it's, I think it's coming up, but not that fast.
Well, when somebody said that, I, I guess I watched the news, when it was talking about the, well, when has that, we didn't see a contract, they were in, I guess they had to cancel the opening.
What they're thinking about, yeah. Well, that's right. I, I went to the Democratic caucus here Sunday.
I was invited, especially to go, I think, to the church.
Well, there were no cameras there, and I did expect to see if they're not red shirt at all.
Did you see that one guy that got tested for coronavirus, they told him to stay, his doctor, he got tested at the doctor office, said he might have, what did they tell you? Tell him stay home for whatever, be a medicine. We had a little, like, a freaking Democrat rally, or Republican one, he went to the rally, and they, and they caught it, and they went back to doctors, because they didn't want to know it. Yeah, I went to a presidential rally, and the doctors, rally, immediate?
Well, they said both of the Democratic, um, Joe Biden and, uh, Ernie...
Oh, crazy, right?
They canceled their big rallies.
That's what he said.
Yeah.
You just can't blame them.
But, well, that was one of the questions I asked, because the Democratic convention is going to be in, I think it's going to be in, it's not LA, it's the, the main one. But last year, two years ago, it was in, I was, I think it's in, in Bangor. And I said, look, they're fun to go to. But the one that was in, um, Los Angeles, there were 3,000 people there. There's no way I'm gonna go to a convention for 3,000 people. Are you kidding me? But San Francisco Maine's one of the only states, none that we know of.
Well, kid, I've been to school, these are in Los Angeles, they have that Conex, so don't you think they'll bring it back? I said, if you have it, you stay right in the after, you get it up to there.
Just, yeah, they've already got it in the membership.
Well, that's what they have.
Those states are...
How come you want it in Maine?
Not yet. As of today, CDC said none in Maine. They've tested 400, right? Lisa has said that. But, um, oh, God, he just coughed, leaving, everybody.
Everybody gets a cut out of you.
Everybody. Oh, and how are you, how are you shaking your hands? I've decided to use this.
I'm like a stick.
I think that's the one to use. So, that's all.
706. Okay, do we hear a motion to come out of executive session?
I make a motion, come out of executive session, Title 1, 405, 6A at 17...
706.
706.
I'll second that.
Move to second it, all in favor, all opposed? Nothing to report after that. Uh, do we hear a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion or adjourn.
I'll second that.
Move to second to adjourn, all in favor, all opposed? Good night, all.